I would like to call to order the Tuesday, September 4th, 2018 meeting of the Monona City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Core?
Here.
Alder Groupie?
Here.
Alder Spade?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Alders Kitzler and more are excused.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 20th and August 29th meetings?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections or additions?
I have some corrections. On page three in the reports, it just listed that the special city council meeting is starting at 6:15. It started at 6:00. I don't know if that is essential to correct, but it's mentioned in the second.
Yeah, I think it changed after the meeting.
It changed after.
Changed after, so at this point, that was true.
Anything else, or is that?
Is that it?
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item up is a presentation of the 2017 audit report by Schenk S.C. I think we all have a copy of this on the... In our packet.
Good evening. There's two documents I'm going to go through. One is the Bound Annual Financial Report, which represents the city of Monona's annual financial report. And the second is required communications that as part of our audit, we do communicate to the city council and the city of Monona.
Excuse me, sir. Could you please state your name for the record?
David Mako with Schenk. So we turn to the annual financial report. Pages one and two is the independent auditors' report. This represents the, our opinion on the financial statements. It goes through the fact of the financial statements contained in this document. They come directly from the city's financial record. Our responsibility is to express an opinion, which we do on the bottom of page one. We have expressed a unmodified. So it means that we would make no modifications to the report you have in front of you. We believe it accurately reflects the results of operations for the year ended December 31st and as of December 31st. Then if you turn to page three, page three through page 11 of this document is what is called Management's Discussion and Analysis. Opportunity for the city management to go through the key indicators of what happened in 2017 with a comparison to the prior year. So I would encourage the council to review it. It's very well done. It's required to contain certain data elements, and it contains all those data elements. Then if we turn to page 12, page 12 and page 13 and 14 are your government-wide financial statements. And these represent and present the city on a full accrual. It shows the total assets being managed by the city on a historical cost basis. So total assets you're managing is about $112 million. Now that includes both your governmental activities and your utility business-type activities. Many of those assets are really in the infrastructure, the roads, the water mains, sewer mains, et cetera. That gets, provide services to the city of Monona. So you can see it's an increase of about $5 million. What it tells you is that when you look at your capital assets, you're reinvesting in the community, and your capital assets did grow in 2017. Total liabilities represents both short-term and long-term liabilities. That is $85 million. And your net position is about $17.6 million. If we turn to pages 13 and 14, you see the changes in your net position. Overall, the city's net position or net ownership grew by about $463,000 and represents that $17 million that we saw on the prior page. Then the rest of the report, starting on page 15, are your fund financials. And they go through the fund financial information that the city is part of your annual budget, both for your governmental funds and your business-type operations. We do pull out the key data, and so we'll go to the second document, which is our communications to the city of Monona. Here, we kind of give you more comparative and kind of pull out what we think is the significant financial information from your annual financial report. So if we move to the staple document, the first four pages of the staple document talk about how the audit went. So it indicates that we are responsible to report how we completed the audit. We completed it in accordance with government auditing standards and audit standards. Those standards require us not only to look at the financial statements that we kind of briefly went through, but also looking at the overall city's internal control structure, compliance, and operation. So what's important about that is your audit of the city includes more than just the financials. It includes the processes within the city. If you turn to page two, you'll notice that we had no non-compliance.
Is that the management communication?
Yes, yep, sorry. Sorry about that. So here, we're on the staple document, page two. As I indicated, the, our audit includes not only the financial statements that we just went through, but includes a review of your internal controls and a review of compliance with laws and regulations. So with respect to both of those, we gave you good opinions on those. We gave you an indication that we had no internal control deficiencies. We do have a couple of comments within the document, but those are deemed to be, you know, small and immaterial, but still recommendations for enhancements. But overall, we believe the city's internal control structure is operating as designed and is functioning effectively. We also look at compliance with laws or regulations, of which we found no non-compliance of laws that you are required to comply with. So a very clean opinion on both internal controls and compliance. Bottom of page two does talk a little bit about accounting practices. There are certain estimates that are embedded in the financial statements. So we do review those estimates, but they're reasonable, appropriate, and we would make no adjustments to those estimates. So then if we turn to pages three and four, here you'll see if we had any problems in completing the audit, we would identify them on these two pages. We talk about any disagreements or any type of significant uncorrected misstatements. If you go through page three and the top of page four, you'll see that the audit went very well from our perspective. We had no internal control issues, no disagreements. The audit involves a lot of different personnel from throughout the city. We do work with various different departments, in addition to Mark and his group. And so from our perspective, the audit went very well. We had no issues that we felt were needed to be reported. So very clean audit. The city was ready when we came in, and we certainly appreciate all the effort of the staff here at the city. Then if we turn to page five, page five is your governmental fund balances. And what we'd like to show is a two-year comparison of what happened in 2017. Did your fund balances increase or decrease? And you can see the various different funds. So your general fund was about $1.8, almost $1.9 million. Stayed fairly consistent in 2017. But when you look at your overall unassigned, you're currently about 29% of your general fund expenditures. So based on your fund balance policy, you're in a strong position based on where you anticipate your fund balance. So that gives you some flexibility moving forward in future years. The other funds will have various fluctuations based on projects and the various different capacities of, and the statuses of each of the districts. So you can see all the different funds. Overall, your fund balances, the governmental funds, increased to about $6.9 million. So no significant concerns in any of the funds. General fund was strong going forward. Then if we turn to page nine, page nine starts talking, or six, excuse me. Page six starts talking about your TIF districts, and there's a number of financial analysis of each of the districts. Mark does a very good job of managing and monitoring the financial position of each of the districts. So you can kind of see what are some of the activities of the district. So as of the end of 2017, the city could recover within all the districts about $25 million. So you advance projects, issue long-term debt to fund projects, you pay it back through increments, and at the end of 2017, you had about $25 million. So each of the next couple of pages walks through each of the districts. All the districts are in consistent position compared to last year. Some of the districts have long-term obligations as identified, but no real concerns from our perspective looking at going into 2018. Then if we turn to page 13, what's always important within a city is looking at your debt position. You have two types of obligations. You have a general obligation debt, and you also have revenue bonds. So generally, your general obligation debt is based on the taxing authority of the city. Currently, you have about 47 point, almost 48 million of long-term debt. As of December 31st, with about 42.8 of that within your governmental activities. When we look at your overall position, if you look at the legal margin for new debt, you have an ability to issue about $63 million. So you've issued about 47.8. A lot of that debt is related to the TIF districts that we just walked through. Currently, of that $47 million, about $20.5 million relates to the general obligation related to TIF districts. So you're borrowing and relying on future increments to cover those debt service payments. And then your revenue bonds are generally focused on the revenues and generally business-type activities. And you can see the repayments starting on the bottom of page 13. Any questions on that? Okay. Then if we turn to page 14 and 15, I indicated we do have two, or three comments. They're considered not significant in the overall financial controls of the city, but just areas where we always look at your internal control policies. The first one just talks about receding, and, you know, your departments have some receding capacity and do do some receding. We're recommending some standardization of that to make sure from department to department. The amount received in various different departments is insignificant overall, but, you know, we're always looking at opportunities to make sure the controls could be strengthened. Journal entries, as part of our audit, we do look at journal entries. These are entries that are made to reclassify or record certain transactions in the city's general ledger. There's instances where not all of them are always approved. All our testing of the journal entries indicated that they're all proper, reasonable, and appropriate, but we're recommending the city look at opportunities to have an approval function over their journal entries. And then on page 15, here we're talking about internal controls over credit cards. And all, like, all the transactions we looked at from a credit card perspective were proper. We're just recommending that the city consider adopting the standard policy on credit card usage and contain a couple of recommendations within. You know, like I said, these are comments that are really not significant to the overall city, but areas to perhaps look at improving the controls within the city.
Just to count on that, this has been brought up, and I talked about me and April. We were developing, trying to develop a policy before she left with the credit card. So that is something we eventually got to hammer down, because that's been a recommendation last year. And that was one, April's goal, I don't think we, we haven't finished that one yet. And the other one was a goal to have April start kind of reviewing the journal entries. So those two we were, were going.
Like I said, all, everything we've looked at was proper. I mean, there was no problems with it, but just practice. With that, I'll entertain any questions anyone may have. Yes?
So we've got about a 25% cash reserve, which is really good. And it looks like we have about, we're utilizing about 75% of our borrowing capacity as a city. So I'm just curious. I know we're a double A-plus rated community, or that's our boundary. And I know Jeff always tells us about this. But I'm just curious to hear from you. What, as good as this report is, what would enable us to be a triple A-bond rated? Or can you speak to that?
I mean, there's very few triple A-bond rated within Wisconsin. Jeff probably knows the numbers more than I.
I think we have seven, eight.
Yeah, something like that.
Mike Six, Brookfield, just got downgraded.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's very, I mean, huge amount of cash reserves, you know, primarily. And, you know, generally, you know, if you had that type of, you know, given that you're in a lot of redevelopment, it's difficult to probably achieve that, given the redevelopment you have.
And how rare is a double A-plus rating?
That's, I mean, obviously a very strong rating. I mean, it reflects.
I can find the numbers for you, Chad, and how Wisconsin credits and where they fit into those particular categories. But, you know, there's not a lot of double A pluses.
Right.
You know, we've got six remaining triple As in the state of Wisconsin. You know, there's a little more than maybe a handful or two of double A plus. There is a lot that have bumped into the double A minus category, and then a few others in the double A category. And appreciate the questions, because of course, this council and previous council's administration have always been trying to move that credit forward, even we have. Since 2003, we, when I started here, we were an A. Being threatened to go down by Moody's because we had drawn down our fund balances. So, you know, you build those up, and very evident that that is an indicator of strong credit. So if we can get you to a triple A, Chad, certainly we're going to try and do that. But as Dave said, and I, we have triple A, we have enough fund balance, undesignated fund balance to pay off 100% of their debt. They're triple A. But you ask the flip side of the question is, why are we borrowing money? If we have those kind of reserves, so.
There's always a balance.
And quite frankly, Chad, the real, to me, the value of that rating is getting you into a market and to be able to compete for dollars at the highest level. When you look at triple As and double A pluses, there have been times when we've outperformed triple As in that same week on our double A plus. And sometimes it's just a matter of appetite for a particular credit to a portfolio. Who wants to buy Monona's, those types of things. So, good questions, but, you know, I would have said basically the same thing Dave said. You know, we want to have good fund balances, but where does it get us if, you know, we're sitting on a ton of cash and we're out borrowing, you know? I hope this doesn't get to Tulsa, but one year, we basically said to them, "You're going to borrow $2.3 million for our infrastructure. Why don't you take that out of fund balance?" That was our advice.
Right.
Because they don't want to reduce their fund balance, we're going to borrow it. Okay, we're going to borrow 2.3. You understand how it works, and you've done an excellent job in terms of that. Certainly it's wonderful to have Dave tell us here from a, from an auditor's standpoint, the strength of your credit.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. There is no public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to, there is no unfinished business. New business, item 2A, consideration of resolution 18-9-2291, authorizing the issuance and sale of $3 million in taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2018B, put forth by the Finance Director interim city administrator. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move up for a wall.
Second.
Okay.
Before Jeff gets up there, the reason why it started is because last week, last meeting, we had a resolution to authorize Jeff to start negotiating for this refinancing. And then he went out and got the rates, so we're asking to be started, to be approved tonight. So what this is, is it's two, two bonds that are borrowed. One was 1.5 related to the Trace Development Agreement. It comes due, actually comes in about two years. We're saving some interest because we're paying no principal down. And the other one is 1.5 for Chase Bank purchase, which comes due October 1st of this year. So that one had to be refinanced. And the other one was just, now it's in TIF 8, so we have cash flow in TIF 8 to support a long-term note so we can start paying down principal and interest on this. And that's all, Jeff, if you want to.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. There are some new faces for me. Welcome to the council. And my name is Jeff Belangi. I've been working with the city since, I think, June of 2003 as an investment banker, underwriter, finance professional, advisor. I get, wear a lot of hats. But basically, we're closely with Mark and the city in finance in terms of what are the best avenues and the available sources of money that the city has when we have projects, whether they be our redevelopment projects or ongoing infrastructure improvements, the ongoing maintenance of, or capital purchases. So we are in the market on a daily basis. And I think Mark and the city relies quite heavily on our activity in that market and knowing where certain bonds and securities are selling. So our advice is based on that. And as Mark said, we have two issues. There's no real new money in either one of these financings tonight. They're refinancing and restructuring. The first one that we're talking about, the bonds, the $3 million, the two particular issues of 1.5 each are being put together and restructured so that we can continue to make payments now that our tax incremental districts, this District 8, is cash flowing. Always takes time for those to start the cash flow. And we're in a real healthy position now with TID 8 to recoup and pay all our debt. As your auditor had just said, when he gave you the indication from their audit practices that, you know, our TID of the $45 million, we have a little less than that. That was a snapshot in time back on the 31st of December. Right now, we're probably 45, 4.5 million less than that in terms of debt service. Don't get too happy. We need the capacity to continue to do what we've done. Monona Drive and all kinds of other things in various districts. And you've used that capacity quite well. More importantly, you've managed it at a double A-plus level, which is really more important to me. People say, "Well, you know, maybe get a new client." And they say, "Well, we don't have any debt. We should be a triple A." Oh, obviously, you don't understand the indication of what that is. You can't have a rating without debt. It rates the debt, it doesn't rate the city, and it rates the probability of that debt getting paid back over the prescribed time. So we're in wonderful shape. It's great to get you guys into the market. You know, we always garner excellent interest rates, and we compete incredibly well with everybody in the United States in that double A category. So tonight, I have a two-page handout. You might want to grab that. The top issue is the $3 million of taxable general obligation refunding bonds. It's taxable because we are benefiting and have benefited a for-profit. And the IRS dictates that unlike our normal, well, if you will, there's not so much normal anymore, but what used to be the predominant type of debt issuance was tax-exempt for public purpose, or public purpose improvements. Cities and villages and even counties have gotten into the game of economic development. And without it, we aren't going to be able to compete with getting and keeping the businesses that we have and diversifying our tax base and rehabbing certain areas. Like Garden Circle, a great project, a big undertaking, but certainly a great benefit to this city. So those are some of the things for the new alderpeople that we have been involved in. When you look at these particular securities, these are serial maturities. We're going to make payments starting in 2010, sorry, on 2019, 10-1, October 1st. You'll see that we sold that particular maturity yield of 2.60%. Does everyone see that? When these bonds or notes are sold, they're sold over a period of time against an interest rate scale. And I think you can see that rates go up with time. These are taxable rates. They're a little higher than what we would expect, but relative to the market and where it's gone, they're pretty darn good taxable rates, considering how the economy has really kind of rolled into a robust, I guess, form. State of Wisconsin unemployment is almost nonexistent. And I know a few people know manufacturers. They're looking for all the qualified people they can find. They just can't find enough of them. So it's an indication, obviously, that the economy's doing well, which normally would mean some inflationary pressures and rates going up. Alderman Wood and I had a chance to talk earlier about the markets. And I think he is also a little somewhat pleasantly surprised at, as I am, how well rates have maintained, a lower level based on whatever, everything else that's happening. So point is, we're fortunate to get in. When you look at that issue, it's 11-year issue. It'll pay itself out in 2029. Actually, that's kind of a fib. Based on our cash flows, we're probably going to pay this issue out sooner. It's been structured that way, and we have a call feature after seven years. But this type of issue is not a tax levy issue, even though we've pledged our ability to levy a tax. This issue is being paid solely from TIF incremental revenue from TID number eight. Does everyone understand that? So it's a self-supported, limited tax issue. And when you also consider that, as opposed to us issuing full faith and credit pledge, we've got some really, really nice interest rates here. The all-inclusive cost on this particular issue is a 3.859%. There was a slight premium paid of $3,400, which of course will be delivered to the city at closing. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has about this particular issue. So you are aware, it's nothing that we're reacting to. Those two notes were put in place purposely with these, those, the current call features and the current dates in order to get to this point. We knew that we would be restructuring once that district had the improvements in, the level of its value rose, and we were able to collect the gross tax rate on that rise in value. It's something similar that will happen in TID number nine. But TID number nine is behind in terms of date. It's just a matter of fact, nine was created after TID eight. And so TID eight's had a couple more years to start to generate some, some income. Nine is looking actually pretty good. It was a project, of course, the RDA was fully behind, and the city also. It's going to be a great development, I believe. And there's some, a lot of work and effort that went into it. But we still have some infrastructure improvements to put in and complete based on our side of the agreement, meaning the city. Excuse me for talking in, I always think I'm part of the city. I know I don't have a vote, but I kind of feel like I'm part of you guys. In any case, we'll be talking about the TID nine issues very shortly. Any questions about this particular issue? Or anything with regard to financing, market, municipal? Okay, well, you got audit tonight, and you got finance tonight.
Well, I'm sure we all understand all of it.
The double A plus, Mayor, the double A plus is how I was.
That's what I understand.
Double A plus. There's not much more you need to understand and feel good about it.
Okay. If there are no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Core?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, item 2B, consideration of resolution 18-9-2292, authorizing the issuance of $3,300,000 in general obligation promissory notes and the issuance and sale of $3,300,000 taxable note anticipation notes, Series 2018C, in anticipation thereof, put forth by the Finance Director interim city administrator. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve?
Can I make one correction, Mayor? We bumped that issue this morning to $3,325, just based on marketing and the fact that we didn't want higher coupons to produce the additional dollars to pay the expenses.
Do we have to do anything, John, to change that?
I'll make the note in the minutes.
Right.
Probably, I would, at times, I would suggest you read the entire motion for the, before the approval occurs. Probably, I would at times, I would suggest you read the entire motion before the approval occurs so it's read into the record.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the amended amount.
Okay. Should I read that right now, Joan, or?
Sure.
Consideration of resolution 18-9-2292, authorizing the issuance of $3,325,000 general obligation promissory notes and the issuance and sale of $3,325,000 taxable note anticipation notes, series 2018C, in anticipation thereof, Finance Director, interim City Administrator. Now, we do have a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Now, is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
I thought this, I thought you were approving the motion to, I thought your motion was to change the amount.
Okay, that's fine. We'll say it was.
Is that?
Now I'll move to.
We already, didn't we already have?
We did have a motion. We had a motion to take it out of order already.
Right.
Oh, but not a.
And then he made.
I need a motion to approve the amended amount. I thought that was a complete motion.
So we don't need another motion?
No.
No.
We already voted out, though. We didn't do a roll call, so.
We'll do a roll call at the end.
At the end, right.
Before Jeff talks, before Jeff talks. So this is 3.3 million, 25,000. This is for two properties in TIF 9 that we purchased, which was EDS and Inland Boats. Basically, was basically about $3 million. We had to add in capitalized interest. That's where the difference is coming in because, like Jeff has said, we do not have cash flow in the TIF 9 yet. We will here, as you saw, Riverfront is going to end within the next year or two. We will have cash flow in here to refinance these. But these are two notes that are coming due as of October 1st of this year with Manona State Bank. If you want, we were talking, you just mentioned Manona State Bank, I've related to these two.
Yes, thank you, Mark. On that point, the 3,325, about 3,45,000 of it will be used on October 1st to pay off existing notes for TID 9. And then the balance of it, as Mark said, roughly 285,000 is for capitalizing the interest. Bondholders aren't going to wait forever to get some kind of payment when they lend you money. And it's no different in municipal finance. So with the tax incremental district instead of, and remember I said, we're never going to, we don't want to levy a tax on the general property taxpayers to pay this debt. It's a self-contained type of operation. So what normally happens is the municipality, as a project cost, borrows at least a couple of years of the interest. And that's what we're doing here. That's why there's a difference between the actual par amount. The reason it went from 3,300,000, when we originally estimated, is because back in June, a lot of people wanted to pay some heavy premiums because they thought inflation was going to eat away at their rate protection if they were going to, you know, pay it out and sell it out of their portfolio in the next couple of years. They're now finding that, oh, we're going back to the old times when they want to buy par bonds instead of paying big premiums. So we didn't generate the premiums we thought we would, so you make an adjustment to the par amount. It's a six and one and a half dozen on the scale. And that's why we're at, and I'm sorry for the confusion, but it's not atypical of how these items get marketed. So we, I really appreciate your understanding. This one has a maturity of September 1st of 2022. That's not by accident. We have roughly $3 million in a, in a previous issue that was used for TID number 9, which happens to be due 9-1 of '22. Okay? It also has the same call feature that this 3,325 has. There's a reason for that, of course, because between now and that time, we're going to generate an increment. We're going to have a cash flow. And I'm going to come back to you and say, here's the long-term takeout of that against our cash flow, just like we did in this previous resolution. So that's the method, or the madness behind the method, and it works great. So we're set up to coordinate. And I think, as you also know, we're going to do some public purpose infrastructure improvements to that particular district. And we've got an issue of, we're going to bid this next week, Mark, this week?
This week, we'll get the bids.
So you're going to get bids this week. We'll be able to put maybe somewhere around $5 million to complete. But that'll be tax exempt because those will be public purpose improvements. And we're going to look at lower rates than what you're looking at now. That's a lot to digest, I know.
It is. Any questions?
Vernacular more than anything, you know, and I apologize for that. You deal with this all the time. You talk about TID and increment. And if you really don't sit down and go through it, and I'm happy to do that with anybody, the mayor's been wonderful about having me come back at times where we just had a session where we talk about finance, or we talk about how certain things get financed, or what these things mean. And I think it's been very beneficial to a lot of the council members and previous members. So I'm happy to come back and spend that time because it's very important that we all understand. You don't deal with it every day like I do, so I don't expect it to just be there.
Alder Wood?
Yeah, I assume this was drafted by bond counsel or approved by bond counsel?
Correct.
So maybe they would have the answer. But I'm just wondering, in the title of the resolution, it calls for issuance of $3,325,000 of general obligation promissory notes and the issuance of the taxable notes. And then it says later that in no, no case shall the city's general, you're not consti, yeah, shall no of NBA general obligation of the city. So why does it say?
Alderman Wood, you are one of the few alderpeople who actually reads those things. And there is a distinction.
I read that far.
There is a distinction, and you've made it. You brought up a great question. When we're doing what this actual financing is a note anticipation note, does anyone see that? That's what we're actually borrowing. That's the instrument we're actually borrowing the money on, right? Which is a flimsy promise, quite frankly. It's the flimsiest credit promise anyone can make to a bondholder that says, we need some money, and we promise to do something in the future that's going to pay you back. Unlike when we do general obligation, hey, we're going to levy a tax. It's going in place. When we adopt this, you're going to get paid. Okay? The other reason, and Joan caught this, Joan says, hey, I thought we were double A plus. Well, you are. She says, well, why are these note anticipation notes only a double A? Because we're not really pledging our tax levy. We're not pledging our total credit. We're only pledging the promise to do something. So we end up with a 10th of, 10 basis points, 1/10 of a percent difference in rate, believe it or not. So to get to your answer to your question, Doug, which is an excellent one, we have to put a bond resolution in place first to allow us to issue note anticipation notes or bond anticipation notes against it. Because that's really where the meat and potatoes is. It says, okay, the council recognizes that sometime in the future, in order to satisfy these, these note holders, we're going to probably have to do a bond issue. And you would have done it when we did the two issues for, for 8 also. We would have put a note resolution, bond resolution in place and issued the NANS against them. So that's, yeah, you are actually acting on two resolutions. They're different. And then, and Doug makes an excellent point. Note anticipation notes do not count against our 5% capacity. So we keep them off there until we either pay them out and they never attach themselves to our 5% capacity, or we restructure them at a future date when they, in fact, then become part of our capacity issue. But in three years, we pay off about 4.5 million of general obligation debt a year. So when your auditor was giving you the 47 million, and we can do 63, and we have 47 out, that is not a stagnant number. It changes all the time because our valuation goes up, and we can issue 69 million, and we paid off 4.5, so we're growing in the other direction. We've used it as a tool to get money when we've been bumping up toward that capacity limit. But that's an excellent question. It's a nuance in there, Doug, that most people don't pick up on. And it's exactly what we're doing. We're issuing and saying we're going to adopt this resolution, not really borrowing any money on it, and then issuing NANS to borrow the money, which don't apply against our limit.
Well, I appreciate the kind words, but the question came mostly out of confusion.
Either way, it was a great question. And that is the nuance of it.
Anything else? Here, no further questions. All in favor, oh, will the clerk please call the roll? Sorry.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Coeur?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next, item 18-9-2293, consideration of resolution 18, or I did say that. Approval of police intern agreements between the City of Manona and the Manona Grove School District and the City of Manona and the McFarland School District, put forth by the police chief. Since this was placed on the agenda, we learned that the school district would like us to hold off on considering it until they have a little more time to consider it. So is there a motion to table? Do we not, not need a motion to table? Okay.
Your business.
Then we are tabling it.
So why do they, what?
Their insurance, just more of insurance purposes. Basically, it's an internship where they would have a student from there work for our police department or fire department. So just figuring out the liability issues. Bill Cole's okay with our side now. And I think their insurance, their risk management wants to take another look at it to make sure they're okay with it again. So they called actually this afternoon and asked if they could hold off on it.
Have we done any police agreements with McFarland before?
No, this would be the first one. We would have that.
Okay.
Okay. Item D, consideration of resolution 18-9-2294, approving the purchase of equipment from Manona Community Media, put forth by the Community Media Committee. Alder Coeur?
I'd like to move to take this out of order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move, move. Second.
Okay. Will, do you want to? You don't have to repeat your complete explanation.
Well, so what we did discuss earlier in the financing personnel was kind of how this came about and basically of just mismanagement by the school. And so they're closing. Mismanagement by the corporation that owned the school, so they're, so they're closing. And, and talking with some of the teachers that I know there, basically, they said it doesn't do anybody any good for the equipment to just get stored. So they're going to try to, you know, get rid of it, whatever. Whatever people don't buy that already know about it, they're going to have a garage sale and sell the rest of it as much as they can.
The library will close in a minute. Please select your selection and bring your items to one of the.
If you look at both these documents, one is the City of Manona, one is the Manona Grove School District, you can see that the Manona Grove School District will kind of have the brunt of the equipment as far as the purchase price. And that is because a lot of it will be, a lot of the equipment here will be in the studio. Not to say that, of course, like all the equipment, the city won't be able to use it. We certainly will. But because it will mainly be used at the school and stay at the school, it makes sense for their purchase. As part of the city-school partnership agreement that we agreed upon with the district, I think, last year, they, they are required to put forth, you know, a certain amount each year of $5,000 each year to keep, to do upkeep for the equipment that we share. So this number of 9,875 fits right into a two-year plan for their equipment. And so essentially, what we're doing is the city's going to purchase all the equipment. And then the school district will pay back the city over a two-year time, 5,000 the first year and 4,875 the second year. And that would be part of the agreement. And this money would come out of the city's franchise fee fund balance. So there's a lot of equipment there. I can go through and explain it. Basically, it's, it's giving us perhaps a backup to what we have, our backup option. It's allowing us to have equipment designated for the studio at the high school and then designated for remote shoots outside of the high school when we're going to football games or when equip park concerts, things like that. So we're not using the gear for everything we do. We have set gear for each thing. And that'll be, that'll be a big saver, I guess, if you will, on the wear and tear of the equipment and what we have now. So that's one of the big things. And it'll also give us an opportunity, if we look at some of the things in the city's budget, give us an opportunity to perhaps get more of or some things that we wouldn't normally get, such as maybe more microphones than we normally would buy because we just wouldn't have the resources to be able to justify getting that many microphones or as nice of a microphone. So I think it's an opportunity to get what we need, but also get some things that we just normally would not get because we couldn't really justify it. But now, at this price point, we certainly could.
Okay, any questions? Alder Spate?
So Will, I know that you've been doing a great job over the last few years of investing in some equipment upgrades for all the things that you do, that you manage between the radio station and our television video media. I think you've said it, but I mean, this is all equipment that you would consider investing this amount of money in anyway. And it's equipment that we're going to make good use of. Correct?
Correct, correct. And some of it, you know, we, some of it, we're not going to get it from MMI, and then it's going to be out in the field the next day. Some of it will be able to stay on a shelf and be utilized when needed. Otherwise, it'll, it'll stay there. But that helps us in the long run because we're not utilizing a small amount of equipment over and over and over. We have, you know, like I say, essentially backups. We have a few microphones. So if one goes down, we're not rushing out to buy another one on Amazon or something. So that gives us that ability as well. And, and as I had mentioned before, some of these microphones gives us the ability to maybe do some new things with WVMO in the future as far as recording music or live music because we'll have more microphones and things available to, to do that. And maybe that will save us in the long run as opposed to having to hire a company to come in and, you know, perhaps provide the PA system or something. Maybe we'll be able to have some of our equipment available, and some of the volunteers may have something. And then we can make it work as opposed to not having that. So overall, it gives us some options, I think, and some, some backup plans as well.
Alder Wood, did you have?
Yeah, so the only item on here that gives me a little pause is the blimp with a dead wombat.
And, and I got that for you. So.
Because I'm concerned if Jake hears that you got a blimp, then God knows what he's going to ask for.
Yes. Jake really wants a drone. He always asks me about that. So just so we all know, that is actually a wombat in Australia. Very cute. But that is right here. If I can, I don't know if I can zoom it. There we go. So here's what we're talking about, that thing right there. They call it a dead wombat. Not very. Couth, or if you will. But that's, you know, you can see that's how it is used in the audio field. Okay, there we go. And a closer view would be right here. So it's basically a microphone, the blimp, inside this cover.
Like you could dust with it.
So I could have used it on pretty much all of your interviews, is what I would have done. I had to clip the microphone on you, and then I would have had the dead wombat down here as a second audio source that blocks all the wind. That's what, essentially, what this big furry thing's doing is if you're, you know, the Weather Channel, and you're going, I'm in the middle of Hurricane Maria, and it's, they're going to use maybe that. And they're not, it's not going to be such a windy sound because that fur is blocking the wind. So it will get used. That will get used quite a bit. And I'm sure, actually, the students will probably love to use it, too. So that is a dead wombat, a blimp. I didn't get a picture of the blimp, but it's basically just plastic netting inside there.
Alder Coeur, did you have?
To Alder Spate's point, I think we went through the wombat line at Community Media Committee. And we are getting a good deal, but this isn't like when I go to Cole's and tell my husband I bought it because it's on sale. We're actually going to be using all of these items. So I think that this is a smart investment.
Yeah, and I guess I didn't, I didn't add that I will. On the bottom here, you see all these other items like XLR cable, BNC cable, extension cords, acoustic wall panels that we can put on the wall, fiber optic cables. They're not charging me for any of those. I'm just going to walk out of the door with them because they don't, they have no need for them. They're, they're just got boxes of it. And they, so is it thousands of dollars? Not right there, but it's certainly hundreds. And possibility for more. I mean, I won't cross my fingers. But my guess is they want all the equipment gone in December. And my guess is if I come first. guess is if I come first of December and they've already got rid of just about everything except for a bunch of stuff over here and here, they might say, do you want any of this? What, do you want any of this while I'm here? You know, and I might get some other things that they just don't care to store or whatever. I don't know if I will, and I don't know if it's, would make sense to take it even if it was available. But if it is, there's a bunch of other stuff that could just come for free because right timing.
Alder Groupie, did you have a question?
I am in support of this, and I think it's a very exciting proposal, and I'm glad that we kind of have made this connection, and thank you for your work on it. Have you done any forward thinking about projected cost savings in the future, what your request will look like next year, for example?
Yeah, and in fact, for even this capital budget, there's some cameras, a camera line item that could potentially get reduced if we felt like it needed to. I had told the mayor that I wouldn't mind keeping the capital budget line item, and I think it's about eight thousand dollars for cameras, even though we're getting these from MMI, just to have it approved in case something breaks of, however it happens, instead of having to come back to you later in the year and try to get approval for more money, we have it kind of ready to go. And if I don't use it, I won't, I mean, if I don't need to use it now that we're kind of doing this, I just, I won't buy it. But I, for at least this year, I wouldn't mind just keeping the capital budget the way it is, and if I don't need it all, that'll be great. And it'll definitely make a difference on upcoming capital budgets as long as the equipment holds the way it's supposed to. And we don't have any drastic new needs anywhere that come up.
And of course, the media department's capital budget's a little different than everyone else's capital budget, and then we aren't borrowing the money for it. It's, I still don't understand why it's even in the capital budget, but it's actually their fund balance. So, it's money they already have. It's just permission to spend it.
Right. From the cable fees.
Right, from the cable fees, right, right. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. One more item related to this, consideration of Resolution number eighteen-nine-two-two-ninety-five, amending the twenty-eighteen operating budget for the purchase of equipment from Manona Community Media, again, put forth by the Community Media Committee. Alder Coeur, would you want to? Well, we're going to take it out of order.
Yes. Motion to take this out of order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move, move.
So, just so you put the back up there again, there's two, two issues here. There's the one for the school, which was nine thousand, the number in front of me. That's going to be paid, like they said, over two years by the school district, and our portion was the four thousand two hundred and seventy. That portion is what the budget amendment is because that's, that will come out of our fund balance. The other nine thousand basically is accounts receivable accounts. It does not need a budget amendment, but the four thousand two hundred and seventy will need a budget amendment to come out of media fund balance.
So, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Or I'm sorry.
We should have our roll call because it's a.
For this one?
Budget amendment.
Okay. Any questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Coeur?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Will. I think we are down to reports of committees, commissions, et cetera, et cetera. Alder Groupie?
Transit Committee, just a reminder, and Mark mentioned this previously, but there will be free rides on Manona Transit, September tenth through fourteenth, so that's next week coming up. And then just a note from the library board. The library received a grant for ten thousand dollars from the Wisconsin Humanities Council for the One Community Many Voices Stories Project. So, this will allow expansion of the scope, the breadth of that project, and I think they're very excited about it. The board also wanted me to mention that there is some HVAC issues in recent weeks, which just sort of reminds us that we need to be conscientious about attending to those issues for the, for the library and making sure that's all taken care of soon.
Close, right?
Yes.
We are, they, where they're doing a study right now to look at it. We are going to be talking about the capital budget. So, there will be, there will be like a step, step by step, what we're going to do with the HVAC. So, we'll be coming to the council very soon to look at.
Thanks.
Alder Spade?
No report.
Alder Wood?
The Ped Bike Committee had a meeting, joint meeting with Public Safety and Public Works last week that I thought went pretty well. And the next thing up is to do the second public information meeting and need to finalize the date on that. And I had a question about, does anyone know is the traveling beer garden that was supposed to be last week being rescheduled, or is that just?
Actually, I just talked to Jake about it today. He's looking for a date to reschedule it. Yeah, and received a date. He's kind of looking at the Schluter Park would be the place. I think he's looking at the, how the grounds are if it's able to happen at that park.
Right, okay.
Alder Coeur?
No reports, although I do wanted to mention that it's continuing to rain, and they were sandbagging again today, or filling sandbags again today. So, if you do have time to head down to Oneida Park and check on operations down there, that would be great. I want to publicly thank all of city staff for coming in over the holiday weekend to kind of keep an eye on things. I was very impressed, and they continue to just go above and beyond for the community, and I'm just really pleased.
City clerk?
No report.
No. Interim administrator?
Oliver Coors kind of took my thunder there.
Sorry.
That's okay. And Oliver Groupie with the transit, I just want to say thank you again, a lot of leadership that was shown during the flood, just with the communal support. There's probably a lot of people out there that, did a lot for the city that, we don't even have a list of all those people. People brought food, sandbag. There's a lot of people who did a lot of stuff for the community down there. I just really appreciate that. And also, it's, and off your note, Oliver Coours and Oliver Wood have been in, Mary O'Connor have been in our meetings, at the ten o'clock meetings. They listen to the conference calls and kind of help us with the press releases. And I also want to thank Leah Kimmel. She's been great with getting that communication out for us. She basically, we all in a room and kind of throw stuff at her, what we want in the press releases, what help we want to communicate that. She, somehow, she puts it all together, even though we're, like, five people are telling her one thing at once. So, really appreciate that. And we really appreciate the community support. You know, we closed the boat launches, and it's, you know, we haven't really seen much calls for that, so we appreciate everybody understanding what's going on with the lakes. And I kind of want to thank Mary's leadership here. She's been in all our meetings, directing us what to do and how, you know, overseeing our stuff. So, I really appreciate that, and I know the department has really, I appreciate your leadership there. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And one thing, I did get an email early this morning, I guess it was, or I can't remember which email it was, that we thought we had this huge store of bags set to go down at Oneida, and they all went yesterday because people were, I know there was a breach down on Shishan, and other people were shoring up, you know, in their yards and things. So, we did put out a call, and I know there were some people filling yesterday, and I think filling again today is, Alder Coeur, we had a group of employees from WPS, had three hours to volunteer, so they came over this afternoon. And Dan, I think he mentioned we bought over three million pounds of sand. So, that's pretty amazing, isn't it?
Okay.
And maybe buying more, I don't know. The staff is still resupplying down there, so. Okay, so, thank everyone again for that. The only other thing I wanted to talk about was we will be discussing some of the capital budget as part of what we had originally thought right before the September seventeenth council meeting. But now, Mark and I are looking at what we have on the agenda for that meeting. We're thinking we could just do it as, we're going to have a very short agenda, so we will just, we were thinking we'd have to start early. Instead, we will just have the regular council meeting at seven. We don't think there'll be too much on the regular agenda, and then we'll just go into the capital after that, and it won't be, it'll be a lot of the shorter requests. And then on the twenty-fourth is when we will get into, I think, public works and parks and the bigger ones. And that is a special committee of the whole, and that will start at six here in this room. So, if anybody was wondering about the timing. Other than that, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.